Well, welcome. Tonight, we're going to talk to another person from Milford, who stepped up and said, "I want to help and I'm willing to put in the time." So, we're talking about school candidates, which this year amazingly, we have seven of them going for three positions. But, if somebody doesn't know who you are, let's start with an introduction.
Okay. My name is Mike Visconti, lifelong resident of Milford, and I'm very interested in serving, or continuing to serve, the town. I say continuing because I did serve for forty years as a town, over forty years, as a town meeting member. And I'm pleased to say that in that forty years, I have a 100% attendance record. And I think that's important, because I did not run to be a town meeting member just to say, "I'm a town meeting member." When I commit to something, I think it serves to show my commitment, that when I take on a project, I commit myself to it. I have 100% attendance record as a town meeting member for over forty years. I have not missed one meeting. I served on the zoning board of appeals for twenty years. Unfortunately, my attendance record at the zoning board was 99.5, actually .56789, or something like that. I rounded off the...
You missed one night?
Well, it was, it was, the percentages are, be careful with the percentages. It was, it was a couple meetings I missed due to being hospitalized with a serious illness.
So, in twenty years, because of hospitalization, you only missed twenty, two meetings?
I think I missed, I missed two meetings.
Michael, I think that's a good record, any way you shake it.
Well, I think it goes to show my commitment to a project or something that I take on. And I will do the same thing if I am elected to fill one of the three open seats on the school committee. I am a dedicated person. I'm dedicated to the town of Milford. I want to serve the town of me at Milford. I believe I have all the qualifications to serve the town of Milford. I have extensive experience in management. I have extensive experience in budget preparation and administration. I have prepared and administered numerous multimillion-dollar budgets for both private and municipal sectors. I have consulted with and advised both of those sectors. I feel that I have all the qualifications to be an active, committed member on the, on the school board.
Well, I was going to start out with the same question that I always start out with and end with. You seem to have answered half of it already. Michael, I'm from Milford. Why should I vote for you?
Well, as I said, I'm not, I don't want to repeat what I've already said, but I think that I, I need, you need to, the voters of Milford, please remember that I am committed, I am dedicated. I will, I will, I will be at every single meeting and every single event that a school committee person is expected to be at. No excuses. I mean, barring death, of course, but...
You're going to let that get in your way?
Well, it's, it's a funny story, not funny, but interesting. When I finally came to at Mass General, I looked up and I, and I remembered that I did have a meeting I had, and I begged and pleaded with my family to somehow get me to that meeting. Of course, they refused and told me to sit down. You've got all kinds of tubes connected to you, you're not going anywhere. But I wanted, I did want to maintain my 100% attendance record, and it bothered me that I could not do it. Anyway, I will be there. I will be there for the students of Milford, for all of the students of Milford. I have no children in, in the system, and I think that's a plus, because I can be extremely objective. And all of my votes on the school board will be in the best interest of all of the students, and not just in the best interest of what may benefit my child, because I have no children in the system. But I know school systems. I've built schools. I know, I know, I know school maintenance. I know the ins and outs of how schools work. I went to school, if that helps.
Went to Milford schools?
Went to Milford schools. College in Boston. Of course, this was a few years back.
As you look at Milford School District, what do you think of the three biggest challenges that the school district's going to be facing?
Well, you know, the one that always comes to mind is, we need to solve this choicing out situation. And I understand there is a, maybe a, I don't know what the name of it is. I think there's some sort of marketing subcommittee on the school committee now. And as far as marketing goes, my thoughts on that are, the best marketing tool we could, we could put forth is showing the Milford residents that we can turn out a superior product, a product that is superior to all of the surrounding towns. And right now, we cannot do that. So, if I did have a child, I would think long and hard about choicing that child out based on the quality of the product that we are now producing in the Milford system. Now, I don't mean to be derogatory or disrespect the school system, because I know that people there are doing the best they can. I believe I can help to turn out a superior product. So, when people think about choicing out, as far as marketing, gee, look at the product Milford is turning out. It's much better than it was years ago. And now, it is much better than Hopkinton is turning out. It is much better than Milis is turning out, Medway. And, believe it or not, we have finally, we are finally turning out a better product than Blackstone Valley Tech. And they're a technical school.
Now, you've got to help me with this, because when you say turning out a better product, what aren't we doing, or how do you judge?
I judge, I judge the end result by a couple of reasons, a couple of ways. Number one, our SAT scores. We have once again, I think for the past ten years, our students have failed to meet the standard established by the college board for, for saying that a student is ready for college or other career opportunities not requiring college degree. Whereas, all of the surrounding towns, including Blackstone Valley Tech, have turned out a product exceeding that, that benchmark. We need to get our students up to surpassing that benchmark set by the college board. We need to have our stu, we need to establish a better passing grade on our AP. We had a 52% passing rate on our AP scores. 52% passed. Much lower than all the surrounding towns. We need to get that up. We need to, we need to do something to, to, to have our students be ready to compete with students from the surrounding towns. Because when they get out there in the workforce, or when they go to college, they're going to be up against the best. And they need to be prepared for that.
Do you think our kids are prepared?
If you, if you look at, if you go by the numbers and put your emotions aside, I mean, it's easy to say, "Oh, Milford has a good school system. How, and how great are they?" Look at all the best, all the good, yeah. Let's look at the numbers. Let's look at the facts. I always look at facts. The facts say that we need to improve drastically. And I can help, I can help with that improvement.
And again, I'm a bit confused. When I look at my own experience, my oldest graduated Milford High. She got into every college she applied to. And then, more importantly, she did okay. You know, if I look at her last three years at Clark, there was one semester she screwed up. She got a 3.95. She got a B+ that year, but every other semester was As or better.
You put her in timeout for that, I expect.
Yeah. I mean, we kept, I used to harass her about that until she went and pulled my transcript and said, "Hey Dad, I don't see 4.0s across the board for you." And I was like, "Okay." But seriously, if, both my, well, my second daughter only applied to Holy Cross, so that's not a good measure, but if the kids are getting into the schools they want and are doing well, what other measure, I mean, I guess I don't know what other measure we use.
We use a comparative measure. And if we compare those students to students from the surrounding towns in comparable districts, we are not measuring up, and we need to measure up. Otherwise, otherwise, let's get back to the original question. Otherwise, you're going to find more and more students choicing out.
Chosing out.
Chosing out. I want to go where, where I have a chance of being turned out as a superior product. That's what, that's what's going to happen.
And I guess that's where I'm stuck, because I'm trying to figure out what else would we want, now, from the top kids. You know, our, our top tier seem to, at least the data I saw, seemed to compete well around. But we have a bimodal distribution where, you know, what I've seen is, our top kids, there's a Gaussian curve, and they do well. And then, we have an ELL population that we'll talk about. But when you average them, the numbers seem to be lower than towns around us. But if I just look at, and again, data, I don't have the data anymore. I did when my kids were in school, but if I just look at the top kids, are they not doing as well as all the other kids around us?
Well, when you say doing as well, I mean, that's a subjective term.
And that's why I'm asking, Mike, I don't know how to measure it.
Well, the only fair way to measure it is by standardized testing. And if you go by the standardized testing, they are not doing as well as the students from the surrounding towns.
That's news.
And they have not for the last ten years.
The top kids?
Well, I, I, I'm talking the average. And we have to use the average. We can't start to single out. We can't start to pull the best apples from the tree and say, "Look how good this apple is."
But isn't that...
And in the same respect, I can't pull the rotten apples on the ground and say, "Look how rotten this apple is." We need to take an average. That's the only fair way to do it.
Then, will Milford ever, if you look at a heterogeneous population like we have and compare it to some of the towns around who are very homogeneous, will we ever really be able to compete on an average, you know, a normalization of the numbers?
We've beat that excuse into the ground.
Okay.
And we cannot use that as an excuse any longer. Let's look at one of the top schools in the state, consistently ranking in the top fifteen, more often than not in the top five. And that's Wayland, okay? Wayland brings in inner-city kids who would rather be out initiating for a gang they're in than studying in school. Yet, well, yet, Wayland consistently ranks in the top five or ten schools in the state. You know, their high school, their high school was built in 1953. Now, yeah, they've done a couple of little adds to it and, and more significantly preventive maintenance to it, okay? But it was built in 1953. And they rank consistently, I don't want to be redundant, in the top five or ten high schools in the state.
So, what are they doing that we're not?
They're teaching the students. And what they're, here's what they're teaching.
Okay.
Reading.
We're paying 800 people to teach our students. What are we missing?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know.
Or 400, whatever.
I don't know. We have one of the, if not the, lowest teacher-to-student ratios in the state. So, there's no overcrowding in the high school.
I was just saying, that's a good thing.
That's a good thing. So, there's certainly no overcrowding. We have, and I, 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 for, for, I mean, you, you know, we talked about Wayland. Built in nineteen, high school built in 1953. The square footage allocation in the Wayland High School, 164 square feet per student. Milford High, double that.
Well, that, I was going to say...
Double that. So, we cannot use, "Oh, we're cramped for space." We can't use that for an excuse either. So, we're running out of excuses. We need to find out, get to the bottom of why we are not turning out a better product. And I can help do that.
Where would you start?
One of the things we need to do is, we need to enhance our basic programs. Reading, writing, and arithmetic, or math. And I realize that mathematics has come a long way since I went to school, but it's still, reading, writing, the three R's, reading, writing, and arithmetic. If we can graduate our students who are proficient in reading, writing, and math, they will have a much better chance of succeeding, whether they go to college or whether they go, you know, into a trade. Without, if you can read, you can, you can do almost anything with a little bit of willpower. If you can't read, can't write, can't add two and two, you don't have a prayer. We need to enhance those classes.
But in what way in your mind? I mean, I'm curious, because...
Well, I would have to, I mean, I would have to look and consult with, you know, the superintendent and look at the curriculum to see where, how. There's got to be a reason that we only have a 52% pass rate on our AP scores, AP exams. There's got to be a reason. What the reason is, I don't know.
Well, you're certainly giving me questions to pose in front of the administration when they come on our show later on. Because I had no idea, you know, that it was 52%.
Well, which gets me to another point. I do my research. Before I make a decision on anything, I will listen to anything anybody has to say, even you. But after I listen to whatever anybody has to say, I will make my own decision and I will vote my own way. I cannot be bullied. I will not drink the Kool-Aid. I, I make my own decisions based on the input I receive from intelligent, well-versed people in the fields that I'm, that I'm dealing with. And I will do that if I'm elected to the school committee.
So, number one challenge you think is improving the test scores of what, or the students...
Turning out a superior product. Which is, yes. Thank you.
What's number two?
Well, I don't know if it's number two, but another...
Give me another one.
Okay, another one. We need to make sure that we are preventively maintaining our infrastructure. I don't want to wake up, you don't want to wake up, twenty years from now and say, "Oh, jeepers, look, the $60 million Woodland School. We need a new one, because, look, the roof has fallen apart. This has fallen down. The lights don't work." Can't have that. With a preventive, with a realistic, well-thought-out and well-managed preventive maintenance plan, that will not happen. As I said, Wayland's high school was built in 1953, and they're still using it. So, what does that tell me? What does that tell you? I'm, I am a function-over-form guy, okay? I am not interested in adding another architectural mausoleum to some architectural company's portfolio, okay? That is not my desire. I am interested in form, getting something done. Not too long ago, I believe it was Class of '01, that class spent a year in the old armory. And I mean, the old armory, before any work was done. They spent a year there studying, trying to study. Make-shift walls for classrooms, very little heat, a couple of, I don't know, 100-watt light bulbs. But, many of those students excelled. And the reason, why do they excel? They excel because they were taught and they endured. A lot of it has to do with the student, I agree, okay? There, there is a lot of, and maybe this is true of your, of your family, I don't know. A lot of what, what goes into a student's learning is their, what I'll call inherent ability. And, you know, they inherit some of their ability from their parents. So, thank goodness for your wife.
Yes. They all agree with you. But now, they were in the armory for a year?
They, they, please don't quote me on the exact, they, they switched. They spent, they, they switched off.
But why?
This was when the, when the Stacy was being done, I think. I believe, when the Stacy was being done. So, they, while that was being done, they had to switch off. Some went mornings here, afternoons, they moved all around at different times. Point is, steel air, no ventilation, no air conditioning, very little heat, couple of 100-watt light bulbs, stuck in there. Oh, wait a minute. No fire alarm system, no spring, the old armory. I mean, it was, it was, it was a disaster as far as functioning as one might think a school should function.
Can we let that happen? Why, in your mind?
I'm not sure why that was allowed to happen. I believe it was because, I'm speculating. I think at the time it was because, well, where else are we going to put them? You know, on, on the football field, where are we going to put these kids?
Yeah, but Michael, when we did Brookside, we ran into the same problem. Where are we going to put 300 kids? And we basically built another half-school. You know, if you think about it, we expanded Memorial, added on to the portables, and at the high school, built out a whole area. So, we came up with the money so that the kids that were at Brookside could get an education in a proper environment. Maybe not optimum.
Yeah, yeah. I am, I am not sure why that happened or why that was allowed to happen. I was not involved. I mean, I could, I could go back and research it, but I'm not sure why that was allowed. I mean, that's history.
Sure.
My point is, it was not an architectural mausoleum or masterpiece, okay? It was portable makeshift walls. I don't, I don't want to go through the whole thing again.
No, understood. But now, when we think about preventive maintenance, you know, and that's a, that's an old topic that the Finance Committee has been beating, you know, that drum for a decade, that we're not doing enough in PM. We ought to do more maintenance. And schools come back and say, "We don't have enough money to do it." How do you answer that?
We need, we need to prioritize where the money goes. Now, if we need to take from Peter to pay Paul, then that's what we need to do within the budget. But we need to prioritize what is important. The taxpayers deserve to know that if they're going to fork over $60 million bucks, that someone is going to take care of that school.
Sure.
And not in 20 years. Or, in Wayland's case, 50, 50 years, say, "We need a new school." Because, and, and, yes, we may need a new school, but I don't want to say, "We need a new school because we did not maintain that one."
But you know, you think about the high school. First class out was '74. I mean, that old high school seems to have weathered pretty well.
Well, if you recall, I think, what, the roof failed after, what, two years? Maybe after one year, it started leaking, but failed after two.
Michael, back then, I was just graduating, so I don't know.
And you didn't mind a few drops of water on your head, right?
No, you had to walk between the buckets on the way to the cafeteria.
Brand-new school. Now, why was that allowed to happen? Who was watching the shop when that, when that, when that school was built like that? First of all, the school was built on a pond. As a kid, and I'm going back now quite a ways, we used to play up there in what was called the frog pond.
Yeah, the retention pond.
Yeah. I mean, it was, we, we played up there. We caught frogs, fried up their legs and ate them, because that's what my dad told me he used to do when he was a kid. So, we tried, stupid kids, we tried it. You know, the way we fried them up, we got a couple of, stole a couple of books of matches from somebody kicking around, okay? And we lit matches and tried to fry the frog leg, okay? Not good. Anyway, of course, back then, you know, that was when, you know, if you, if you built, if you filled in a pond to build a building, eh, you know, no big deal, right?
Not anymore.
Not anymore. So, but that, I mean, the parking lot, the asphalt started crumbling after a couple of years and heaving and settling and potholes and water. Not a good, not a good situation. But, there's no reason that roof should have failed.
Agreed.
And I think, I can't recall what it cost us to replace that roof, but it was a significant amount of money.
Now, in your mind, is there enough money in the school budget? I mean, at the end of the day, we're spending 60-plus million a year. Over 60% of our budget is school-related. So, is there enough money in the schools to do PM? And it's just not being allocated, not properly, but optimally? Or do we need more money in the schools?
Our cost per student in the school budget is well below the state average. So, there is no reason why we should not be able to, with the money available, take care of everything. It's management of the money. And that's where I can help.
I thought we were above net school spending.
Not if you look at the state average.
Again, new data. That surprises me, because I thought we went through this two years ago, talking about how much is spent, because the school committee brought up that certain towns around us spend 10%, 15% more per student.
And that may be, and that may be. But once again, now, we're talking averages now. Whenever you're talking about spending, sure, it's easy to, "I'll go find another town. I'll go find a studio that has better chairs." But on the average, these chairs aren't bad.
That would be hard.
But on, but on an average, these chairs aren't bad, right? Or are they? I think they are.
Yep.
Anyway, you can't, like I said, you can't start picking, "Oh, here's the best apple. Look how good this is."
I guess I'm just trying to get an idea, because you're throwing up a lot of concepts that, obviously, I'll follow up on, because now you got me curious.
But, but, may I interrupt for one second? My intent here is not to run down the school system or the people that are running the school system. My intention here is to bring up issues that I believe I can help with.
But now, again, back to a fundamental question. In your mind, is it that we're not allocating much, enough money to PM, preventive maintenance in the school budget? Or is it that we need to increase the school budget?
I have not looked at and studied the preventive maintenance program and money allocation. I have, in the past, developed for clients of mine, because I have worked for a number of companies until I decided, oh, I don't know, 20 years ago, so ago, maybe more, to self-employ and consult. Sounded like a good thing, good thing to do at the time. I don't know. If you ask certain family members of mine, they're thinking, "Well, maybe that wasn't such a great idea." But that's what I did. And I helped them develop preventive maintenance plans. I helped them with their budgeting. I helped them with their spending. I can do that and do that well if I am on the school committee, or help to do that well. I'm only one person. All I can do is make suggestions and help, and help as much as I can. But I can tell you this. I will work hard, as hard as I possibly can, and that's pretty hard, to ensure that every student that leaves the Milford District leaves with a quality education.
I want to throw you a softball, because I've heard your position, but your views on using profanity, like two-and-a-half override or...
Did I use profanity?
No, but a lot of people, in my mind, do. They talk about two-and-a-half overrides. They talk about debt exclusions.
Okay.
To me, those are about as profane words as we'll ever use in Milford. What's your view on the need or the use of two-and-a-half overrides and debt exclusions?
Prop two-and-a-half was not an invitation to spend more than two-and-a-half, okay? It was a feel-safe cap. That's what it was designed to be. For somewhere along the line, people said, "Oh, we can, we can, we can increase by two-and-a-half. Let's, let's do it. Let's do it." No. That is not what Prop two-and-a-half was designed to do. So, I have no desire, nor do I think we need to exceed the two-and-a-half.
I've heard it explained two ways. One way is, two-and-a-half percent is the minimum we can spend. The other way that I've publicly said, I believe it was set up to say, "That's the maximum you can spend as town government." Which way?
Well, that is it. That's, that's the way it is. It's the maximum, without an override.
When would we go for an override?
I believe that we'd never have, would never have to go for an override.
Thank you.
Now, if we did, if we did though, if we did, certainly, the debt exclusion is the much better way to go. With the debt exclusion, that increase is not used as the basis for your next year's two-and-a-half percent override limit. But if you do the two-and-a-half override, then whatever that amount is, that's what your next year, that's the limit that is your two-and-a, next year's two-and-a-half is based on.
Right. You go two-and-a-half on top of the two...
Two-and-a-half on top of the, it's up and up and up, as opposed to the debt exclusion, where it's the two-and-a-half... where it's the two-and-a-half, but then it's, you don't include that two-and-a-half.
And the debt exclusion supposedly ends.
Ends.
You know, it's, you've seen, and I guess what bothered me is I've seen towns around us where they go for debt exclusion and it's five hundred bucks per homeowner now for the next twenty years. That, I don't know, it seems harsh to me when you're looking at so many people in Milford who are living on fixed income. To ask them for, I mean, the people who built Milford.
It's unfair. And what we, we need to consider is that, that compared to if we, if we had a two-and-a-half override, they would be spending far more money in the, in the following ten, fifteen, twenty years than if we went for a debt exclusion. Keeping in mind, I am not in favor of either, because I believe we do not have to do that. We, when I, when the budgets I prepared, I was given an amount of money. Here's a million bucks, make the budget work. So it was up to me to say, okay, you're gonna get this. Now, you're gonna get ten bucks. You can spend that ten bucks any way you want, but that's all you're getting. If you spend five, that's fine. But you can't spend twelve and you can't spend fifteen. Somewhere along the line, the school budget got twisted so that, oh, well, I need, you say a million bucks, no. I need, I need two million, so that's what I gotta get, instead of, no. You're getting the million, live with it, make it work.
Yeah, but Michael, I need to be young, thin, and have hair. I can say that all I want, but in the mirror, a fat old bald man looks at me and says, no. I mean, they can want two million, five million, you know, they can want what, everybody wants more. But the balance of what we can afford...
Well, except your situation, fat, old, and losing your hair, you really don't have too much to say about that. That's pretty much out of your control, where a budget is not out of anybody's control.
Okay.
A budget is doable. When I was a young kid, every weekend, every Saturday morning, I was given a quarter. Now, you could spend that quarter any way you want, but don't come back for any more. So I, I had that quarter, I said, gee, I wanna go see that movie. I wanna, uh, let's see, I want to buy some more Gimp down at the playground and do some Gimp keychains, and then I wanna go see that other movie. But a quarter's not gonna do it, so what do I do?
So maybe I don't do the Gimp this way.
So now I have to say, well, wait a minute, what don't I do? What do I not need to do the most? Well, I'm not really a big fan of that movie, so I don't care about that. But gee, I love doing that Gimp, and all my friends are doing that, so I'll spend my money there. There's your budget. Spend it however you want, but don't come back for more.
Isn't that what we do now, though? Except for, well, let's take a step back. Let's look at the way the school budget is set. Are we doing it correctly? Should we look at changes?
I believe we should.
Okay, we've got four buckets for the people who are six loyal viewers watching. One bucket is healthcare.
Well, first of all, not to interrupt, but it's only five loyal viewers, because your sixth one is right here.
But you got healthcare. So we pay for the teachers', employees' healthcare out of the town budget. Then we have, if I could call it the mortgages. It's really the bonds on Stacy, on the new woodland, all the school buildings. Then we have two other buckets. One is sped and ELL, and one is their operational funds. And for the past few years, we've pushed the operational budget to stay at two-point-something percent every year. And then we fund sped and ELL at whatever rate is actual. Should we look at changing that?
Here you go, here you go. Here's your two percent. Now, spend it however you want. If you wanna spend it on sped and ELL, some of it, go ahead, but you're only gonna get the two percent. So if you gotta take it away from something else, you decide. That's an administration decision. You decide what you wanna do, but that's all you're getting.
Will that work? I mean, seriously, with, a kid comes in who's a special needs kid, could cost you a hundred fifty grand, one kid. By law, you have to do it. We're in Milford, so we want to take care of our kids. But then what do you do? You gotta take that money out of the typical kids?
Don't take it out of the typical, take it from somewhere. Not necessarily out of the typical kid, typical kids.
Okay, but where?
Well, I don't know where right now. We, we, once again, that's what budget management and preparation is all about. We have to look at everything, every line item. Where can we shave a little bit without it having a detrimental effect?
But you're saying inside the school.
Inside the school.
Okay.
Where can we shave a little bit without it having a detrimental effect on the quality of education we give our children?
'Cause that, if we start shaving like police, which is ninety-four percent personnel,
No, no.
you're, you're shaving people. But you're saying inside the school budget, figure out a way.
Figure out a way, within the school budget.
Any ideas where you would look?
Well, once again, I would have to examine that budget line by line, which I will do, which I will do thoroughly, before I make any recommendations or suggestions as to what, what is done. But I will do that. I will do that. I, once again, I can't be bullied, nobody can tell me what to do. I will listen to everybody, but when I vote, when I vote at, at a school committee meeting, it'll be my own vote, for my own reasons, based on objective input from other people.
Now, another topic that people a lot, how do I say this? I guess I can't say politically correct, in a politically correct manner. A lot of people say the immigrants that are coming to Milford are hurting the overall quality of the education of our kids. What's your view?
Okay, well, as I said earlier, let's look at Wayland. They bring in inner-city kids, a, a certain group of inner-city kids, a quote-quote of inner-city kids, doesn't seem to affect the quality of education they get.
Is that anywhere near the same level? I mean, you can bring in ten, twenty, I mean, we've got forty-two hundred kids, and you pro, I mean, there's a significant percentage of ELL kids. Is that, I'm, I'm asking, 'cause I don't understand.
And, and as I said earlier, that excuse has been beaten to death. Let's get by that, let's get by that. You got, you, you use that, not you, you use that as an excuse the past two years to get more money for this and more money for that. You got it, so now you can't continue to use that for an excuse. You got the money to fix it, fix it. Don't use that for an excuse anymore.
Now, if I'm a parent and I say, Michael, does the number of ELL or special needs kids hurt the overall education that my child will see? What would you say?
I'm saying, I would say it should not. If it is, then there's something wrong.
God bless, but not it should not. Does it? What's reality today? Do you have any idea?
Well, I, 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 I don't know, I can't, I can't...
Okay, that's fair.
I cannot objectively say yes, because I need to, I would need to see specific data that, that proves to me that that is hurting the, the overall...
Or not hurting.
Or not hurting. And I won't, I won't guess. I don't guess at stuff.
Do you have any idea how we could more efficiently address the immigrant population in our school system?
Are we talking documented immigrants or undocumented? Because there's a difference. Now, my understanding is that there are a number of undocumented immigrants in the system.
I believe so.
So, the way we deal with that is at a different level. We need to find a way to reduce the number of undocumented immigrants in the town.
Yeah, but Tomma Loughlin can't deport them to Rhode Island. I mean, how, how do you, on a local level? 'Cause you're dealing with a very high immigration-level question for the United States.
You make it, you make it, you make Milford unattractive to undocumented immigrants, so they will not want to come to Milford. Now, Framingham did it, and Framingham went so far as to, and I know this for a fact because I saw it with my own two eyes, in the town, in the town hall, on the town, on the bulletin board in the town hall, there was a eight-and-a-half by eleven posting. Now, I'm not saying the town of Framingham did this, but they allowed it to remain there. Milford accepts undocumented immigrants.
Seriously?
Here are the, and they gave the directions, well, a little map, either from the town hall conquered, one thirty-five, or go sixteen down, you know, one twenty-six, six. They gave the directions to Milford.
You saw this personally?
With my own two eyes. I was building in Framingham and I had business in the town hall, with my own two eyes. Now, once again, I'm not saying that the, the town of Framingham posted it, but they allowed it to be there. They handled their problem. Their undocumented immigrants has been reduced dramatically. And that's one of the ways they did it. You make the town unattractive, or if, if, if I didn't want you in this room and I, every time you came through that door, I had a little board that came out and stuck you with a pin, saying, gee, I really don't wanna go in that room anymore, I wanna get stuck with a pin. Be unattractive, there'll be no attraction for you to come in here, no desire, and you'd stay out there. Make it unattractive, but that, once again, that is on a higher, that's what I'm saying.
Michael, how do you do that?
Well, I don't know. One of the things I said...
I'm totally confused, because, again, we can't deport people to Rhode Island. Or you can't send them, say, go to the town next door. We don't have the right to do that.
I'm, I'm trying to, my, 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 my idea is to not to have to do that, because they won't be here to have to do that. They won't want to come to, why, why do they want to come to Milford as opposed to Upton?
Housing. The only thing I can think of
Okay.
is we have, at least I think we do, much higher percentage of apartments and rental units than a lot of the towns around us. So that's one reason. The second I can think of is culture. You know, if I speak and think about why did my grandfather come to Milford? Now, he came legally back in thirty-nine, it's 'cause there were a lot of Portuguese here. And he could speak to them. You know, you think of how many Brazilians are here. The only reason I can think Brazilians came to Milford was a lot of Portuguese-speaking people.
Could very well be. Now, it's important to understand that I am not talking about documented legal, legal immigrants that come to Milford. They're welcome. I welcome, welcome them. As a matter of fact, hardly a year goes by, because, and I say a year because I don't see that many of them, that somebody doesn't come up to me and say, look, Mike, your dad in, in nineteen, I don't know, you know, fifty-eight or sixty-two, helped me become a legal immigrant. And if it wasn't for him, you know, I, I would've had to, I don't know, go, go back or go somewhere else. Your dad worked with me, and that's what you, the people did back then. And there's no reason that can't be done now. I, I, I will fight to educate any documented immigrant in this town. I'll fight for it. But we cannot keep using that as an excuse for not meeting the standard that the other towns are meeting.
I guess that's my question. Are our kids suffering because we have legal, illegal, you know, English language learners in the school system?
I, you know, I can't say for sure. I can only speculate.
But just what's your gut feel?
I'm thinking, no, I'm thinking that we should not, they should not be suffering because there, there's enough infrastructure, there's enough personnel...
I would hope so. We've put enough money into this.
We've put certainly enough money into it. And that's another thing. We can't keep throw, the, the, the idea is, oh, we have a problem, let's throw some dollars at it. I don't do that. That's not how you solve problems. You don't throw money at a problem to solve it.
I remember back in two thousand and three, the superintendent said, I'll fix the MCAS problems if you give me a million dollars. And we voted to give it to him.
See?
And you sit there and say, okay. So you put an extra million in to fix the MCAS problem. Here we are, what, fifteen years later? We're still talking about the MCAS problem.
Now, speaking of that, okay? That class I talked about that spent a year at the Armory, six of those, six kids in that class, six kids, scored, got, received a perfect score on the math MCAS and received a letter from the, I don't know, who's the top, top dog in, in Boston of education guy? I don't know.
Okay.
You know, a letter of commendation. Six kids, perfect score in the math, on the math MCAS. I believe that probably has not been, been done since. I can't swear to that. If I'm wrong, I would like to know that, and I'd like to congratulate those kids. But as far as I know, it has not been done. Hard to get a perfect score.
But these are the kids in the place, the Armory with no light bulbs and no heat and...
That is correct, that is correct, that is correct. Because it was function over form. The form was terrible. But functionally, because of the teachers that were there, because of the, the dedication, and, and I guess the commitment, if you will, and some of it, some, some of the credit goes to the students, okay? You know, you have to want to learn. And maybe that's what we have to do. We have to instill in our, in our, in our kids, look, you need to learn, you need to want to learn. Are they sent home summers to read books anymore? Probably not. I don't know.
Well, some are, at least for, you know, I'm talking, now I'm dating myself, because my youngest graduated, you know, twelve years ago. You know, one of the things I keep hearing is that it's changed since I was there. When I bring up, you know, when I went to school, God help you if you embarrass the family. If I did something less than intelligent at school, I would tell Uncle Paul Raftery, do anything you want to me.
That's right.
You can't say beat me, because now people take it literally, but do anything but call my parents. Don't call my parents and tell them that I embarrassed my family.
Same here.
But back then, I really believed we expected our educators to educate our children, not raise them. Are we not suffering because a lot of that burden is being pushed onto the schools?
It, it could very well be. There are a num, I'm sure there are a number of families who send their kids to school to, to be babysat, because they don't wanna do it, or for some, for whatever reason, I don't know. Or maybe for a free meal, who knows? Those are the things, though, that we have to deal with. That happens in every town. We cannot keep using that as an excuse. We have to find a way to work around that. We've certainly thrown enough money at it. And how much, how much more money we wanna throw at that problem or situation?
I mean, sixty-plus million dollars a year seems pretty adequate. I mean, I'm obviously biased, because I'm on the FinCom that votes for it, but it seems like sixty-plus million dollars a year should be enough.
When you consider everything else I said, one of the, if not the, lowest teacher to student ratios in the state. You know, there are more, twice as much square footage per student in the high school that Wayland has, who ranks in the top five mostly every year. There is no reason, well, there must be some reason. I will, I will work hard to find out what that reason is, and I will work hard to correct that if I'm elected.
Do you have any idea if there's any special programs you would add to the Milford school system?
Any program that will enhance reading, writing, and math, or sci, and science. Because keep in mind, the main reason we go to school is for academics. Now, the extracurriculars, yes, we need them, they're fine, and I would support those. But those are secondary to the main reason that we go to school, academics. If you can read, write, and, and add, two and two, divide, multiply, wherever you go, if you don't know, you can, you can, you can figure it out by, if you can read, write, and do math.
Now...
Perfect example is that clock up there on the timer. With a little bit of math, we figured out that there were three minutes to go, whatever it was, okay?
Yes.
But you need to have those skills.
Let me ask a pointed question, 'cause it's something that I've worried about for many years. We're all proud of VVT. Dr. Mike, Dr. Fitzpatrick turns out, a lot of very successful kids.
No question.
But I worry. I think of, and I'm being self-centered, people like my father. My father came over to this country, he had four years of education. So you put my father in an organic chemistry class, he wouldn't do well. in an organic chemistry class, he wouldn't do well, just he was not an academician. On the other hand, give that man a tool, and he was a dang artist. And I worry, because somebody like my dad, who is an artist with his hands, could never get into BVT, 'cause he wouldn't be part of the top fifteen percent of the academic class. What are we doing for people like that? Very smart, very dedicated, hardworking, but, okay, if you wanna be a tradesman, you can't really learn at Milford High.
Milford High is not a trade school, it's not a vocational school. Before we spread our wings out to vocational, into the vocational territory, we need to, and I hate to be redundant, but it's an important point, we need to turn out a student that is proficient in reading, writing, and math. With those three qualities, they can go out and learn a trade on their own. Been happening since the beginning of time, and it will continue to happen. That's what we need to do. Milford High is not a vocational school.
No, I understand, I just worry about the kids who would benefit from vocational careers, that we can't help them anymore. 'Cause if they're not top academic performers, they don't get into BVT, and we don't have any programs at Milford High.
Which is another good point. BVT, vocational school, turning out a superior product, academic-wise than Milford High is. Unacceptable, unacceptable in my opinion.
But how, if I get to pick from the top fifteen percent of your talent pool, and I don't have to deal with the rest, how do you compete with that?
Once again, we, we can't just select, you know, the, the, the top tiers.
But isn't that what BVT does? I mean, nothing against their program, I think it's incredible, but to get into BVT, I mean, I keep hearing, and maybe I'm wrong, but I keep hearing, you gotta be in the top fifteen percent of the academic class, or you don't get picked.
It, it could very well be, because, but, but, that, there, there are other students who are also in that top fifteen percent, that, that don't, that go to the Milford schools, that don't go to BVT, so, I, I don't know for certain, but I have to imagine that averages out. And, you know, we all have some inherent ability to learn. It's the responsibility of, of the, of the school district and system to nurture that inherent ability, and teach, and make kids learn. That's what we need to do. With that knowledge, when they walk out that door of Milford High School on graduation day, they're going, going to be ready, willing, and able to, to number one, go to college, or number two, go into the, the trade, or some other, some other, uh, business, or whatever. But they will be well-prepared, and what they don't know, they can read, and they can write.
A little while back, I walked into the C Wing, Science Wing at the high school, and I was walking around, I said, isn't this cool? Looks just like when I was here. And then I said, oh my God, it looks just like when I was here. Yet, as you said, you know, the science, um, side of our economy is what's driving, biotech, biopharma, it's driving the Massachusetts economy.
Very important.
Why isn't it that somebody on the school committee hasn't gotten up and said, right, wrong, or indifferent, we need to drive the science programs here?
Well, if you, earlier I added science, I, I said, reading, and, and sci, and the sciences, science field, absolute necessities, have to do it. There are some students who don't even know that, gee, this science is pretty good, until they're, they're, they're introduced to it and say, hey, I kinda like this, this stuff, and there's some opportunity here for me, when I get out of school, to excel, and, and make a living.
But you wouldn't expect the kids to know that, would you? Isn't it really our responsibility to help them understand?
We have guidance counselors, that's their job, as I, as a part of their job. Look, when we were in school, we took tests, and then we, we all each had a meeting with the guy, it was only one guidance counselor at that time.
Dr. Salvia.
But actually, no, it predated him, Mr. Moran, Harold Moran, okay?
Okay.
And, and we all dreaded going to see him, because he was going to tell us what we were going to be, and when we were gonna be it. And we'd bring each kid in, and he'd say, you are gonna be an engineer, and you are going to this school, you are gonna be a whatever, whatever it might be, and you are going to this school. And we were all, you know, we were all shaking in our boots, oh, he's gonna, I don't, what if I don't wanna, no, that's what you're gonna do, because you have the ability in that field. Now, I'm not saying we should do that, but we need to be able to recognize in a student what their abilities are, and in what field.
But even, you know.
And guide them, guide them in through it.
When we hit senior year, back then, Dr. Salvia and Uncle Paul Raftery, who, you know, I'll never stop singing his praise, but they took three of us aside and said, okay, you gotta leave Milford High for a couple days a week. And we looked and said, why? 'Cause you wanna do more science programs, and we don't have any. So they sent us to Dean Junior.
Down to Dean, sure.
And, you know, like you say, scared to death that, okay, how are we gonna do against college kids? But yeah, it was probably the best experience, 'cause it really got me interested in the sciences.
And you turned out not half-bad.
You know, besides myself, I did okay. So now I turn around and say, we should be really helping kids, 'cause a junior in high school, how do they know they're gonna really thrive in chemistry?
Well, you, you, you don't, you don't.
But it's up, in my mind, to the professionals to expose them to it, and try and encourage them. Are we doing enough of that?
I, 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 I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, I don't know the answer, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna wing it.
Well, that's legit.
But I know that, I mean, I know even when I was in school, you know, I went to school, I, my, Mr. Moran, Harold Moran, you will be an engineer. Okay, how, how, how hard can it be, right? So I studied engineering for a couple of years, and I figured out, wait a minute, I kinda like this engineering thing, but I don't think, I, I wanna try to do something else, I'm not sure. So I, I, I kinda left the engineering to, to the side, and I, um, went on to, you know, business administration and, uh, finance, which I liked much better, I, 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 I was better at. So, I don't know, coming out of high school, how really, if, if, if someone out of high school knows really what they want to do with the rest of their life, boy, God love them.
Yeah.
I know I did not, no.
Michael, I'm from Milford, why should I vote for you?
Vote for me, because I can tell you this, I will work my tail off, day and night, to ensure that every student, and I mean every student, your typical student and your atypical student, that leaves the Milford system, will leave with a quality education commensurate with their ability. That they, they, each student, whether, whichever end of the scale they're on, will be challenged according to their ability, and I will work hard to see that that happens.
Well, thank you. And as always, I've always made the commitment that I will never ask you to vote for a specific candidate, but I will beg our six loyal viewers to get out and vote. I mean, sometimes we've had twelve, fourteen percent turnout. Please, get to know each of the candidates, we got seven of them this year, seven great Milford people that have said, I'm willing to help. Get to know which ones you feel most comfortable with, and then show up and vote. And as always, may God bless, and may tomorrow be a better day than today. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
And thank you for stepping up to help.
And thank you for having me on the show. Thank you kindly.